Greetings from the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce. I'm Jennifer Harmoning, President of the Chamber. Pleased to be here today for our City Council Candidate Forum where we get to meet our candidates. And I'm pleased to turn it over to Brady Folkstad, our volunteer moderator. Thanks, Brady.
Jennifer, thank you and thank you everyone for taking interest and attending virtually our City Council Forum. Today we have three candidates for City Council. You'll have the opportunity to vote. Early voting starts September 20th, so coming up very quickly, otherwise Election Day in 2024 is November 5. Joining us today is Kara Schultz, Dan Gustafson, and Chris John. Again, we have provided all of the candidates with the questions in advance, so they're able to review those. And we randomly selected the order in which they'll be answering the questions. As we go through, it is the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce, so the questions are going to be more on the business and economic side for this forum. But to get things going, we would like to meet our candidates that we have here. Going first will be Dan Gustafson. Dan, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and what motivated you to run for office?
I sure can. Hi, I'm Dan Gustafson and I'm running for reelection to the Burnsville City Council. I've had the honor of serving on our community for many years and I really focused on the vibrancy of our community itself. I'm a 29-year Burnsville resident, been married 38 years, two daughters, and two grandchildren. My experience as a City Council member from 2004 to 2012, I took four years off and came back in 2016 to present, president, present, excuse me. During that period of time, I was the President of the Economic Development Authority from 2007 to 2011 and from 2018 to the present time. I currently serve on the National League of Cities Economic Development and Housing Committee. I'm liaison to the Experience Burnsville. I'm on the League of Minnesota Cities Improvement Economics Committee and Metro Cities. I'm on the Board of Directors. As far as a lot of community involvement, which I have been involved in a lot of things, I'm founder of Art and All That Jazz Festival, former board member of the Chameleon Theater, and the current treasurer of the 30 Days Foundation, which we're a foundation that helps people with one-time financial need. Whether you need your car repaired or rent paid or something, we can help you with that. And my wife and I have been foster parents in Dakota and Hennepin County for 15 years. I'm very proud of the work that we've done in our cities to support public safety, enhance economic development, and maintain the quality of life that makes Burnsville a great place to live. What motivates me to run again is my commitment to our community. I want to continue pushing for initiatives that not only address the deeds of today, but lay the groundwork for Burnsville of tomorrow. Our city is drawing and I want to make sure that they handle thoughtfully, responsibly, while always keeping our residents' best interests at heart.
Thanks, Dan. Now over to Kara. Kara, tell us a little bit about yourself and your motivation to run for office.
Thank you. I really appreciate this opportunity. Not only do I live in Burnsville, of course, but my business is in Burnsville. Eleven years ago, I purposefully moved to Burnsville because this was the city I wanted to live in ever since I was a child. I was first voted in to serve on City Council in 2016 and reelected in 2020. The Chamber and I have worked together during some really great times, like ribbon cuttings for your businesses, eating great food at food trucks, at community festivals. We've also worked together during some really tough times, like COVID and the shooting of our officers and our firefighter paramedic. And I valued that relationship and you know you can count on me for straight-up answers, open information, and also a search for mutually beneficial solutions. So why did I run for office and why am I running for reelection? I want more residents and business owners to be able to be truly involved in their governance, to be partners, for you to be part of the decision-making. From removing building height restrictions to getting rid of the moratorium on building new apartments to open up the possibility workforce housing, to having residents and our business community completely rewrite our entire city code, to including business owners in conversations earlier about proposed city changes, and now to creating a neighborhood grant program which is funded by the sale of property, not increased taxes. So I've done what I said I would do successfully and with results. And I look forward to continuing to work with the Chamber so we can accomplish more of the same together.
Thanks Kara. And now Chris, tell us about yourself and your motivation to run for office.
Well, thank you Brady and Jennifer. I really appreciate you giving us this time to speak to the residents in the Chamber. My name is Chris John. I am a Navy veteran and I'm an accountant by trade. My wife Nicole and I specifically chose Burnsville out of the other southern metro suburbs over 20 years ago because we saw, well, for lack of a better term, we fell in love with Burnsville. I think it's a great place to live and is a great place to raise our kids. So we raised our two sons Nate and Devin in ISD-191 schools. Started volunteering where we could, chaperoning at field trips, school carnivals, and also became involved in the Burnsville Athletic Club with BAC when they were playing sports. Twelve years ago, I started becoming more involved in the Burnsville Advisory Commissions, starting as an alternate on the Economic Development Commission. I served my full two terms on the EDC. I worked my way from alternate to chair. And in 2019, I moved on to the Planning Commission where I really get, I feel really getting the nuts and bolts of the city. And I've loved every minute of it, especially when I was doing the years as Chair. It's just fun for me. Through these commissions, I had the opportunity to work, enjoyed sessions with the council. So like a council light, if you will. I've worked on, helped with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan in the Center Village Vision, plus other, you know, similar type joint initiatives. The reason for running actually happened four years ago when these two incumbents were up for reelection and nobody ran against them. And to me, that just wasn't right. I feel like we should always have some type of competition in our elections. And I think it just makes us better servants to our community. Therefore, two years later in 2022, I threw my hat in the ring for the first time and there were seven of us. So I ended up finishing right behind the incumbents who ultimately retained their seats. And even though I lost, I knew that night that I would run again in two years. So here we are, two years later, and I'm running again.
Thanks, Chris. And the audience got to hear some of the music, so that was good on our timer there. Moving on, now each candidate is going to have a minute and a half to respond to the following questions. Kara, you are going to be going first. Kara, can you describe to us what you believe the city government's role is in developing a positive business atmosphere?
Sure. First and foremost is getting roadblocks out of the way. I mentioned before removing building height restrictions and removing the roadblocks to building workforce housing. But zoning can also be a major roadblock and zoning today looks very different than it did before I took office. And even little changes like when we reformed our sign restrictions are really important. Keeping taxes and fees low directly affects a business bottom line. And I've never voted for a tax increase in the eight years I've been on council. And while I may lose most of those votes four to one, my vote and my opposition to tax increases has kept the increases lower than they would have been. Also encouraging redevelopment from the businesses themselves, rather than the city decreeing what that development should look like and picking winners. Because I trust that you know your industry better than I or anyone else at City Hall does. And we're starting to see the results of that at the mall. And as you know, Brady, and we're all seeing several large-scale redevelopments all around the city. And finally, safe cities are good for business. Behavioral Health Unit, which is answering the mental health and drug abuse calls, leaves a lot more time for the rest of our police department to answer the emergency calls. So safe cities are also a positive business environment.
Thanks Kara. Now, Chris, this one comes to you next. What do you believe the city government's role is in fostering a positive business environment?
Well, Brady, I believe we play a role by ensuring that our city is properly staffed and equipped with the resources necessary to get the job done. So my time on the EDC and on the Planning Commission, I've heard time and time again from the business partners that came in before us, tell us how great our staff is at answering questions, how simplified our process is, and they're great at explaining the process. I give accolades to them. Our job as City Council members, I believe, is to ensure the staff is properly supported and have the ability to maintain the best economic tools such as creating PIF districts or other financial assistance programs, so they can thrive as well. As well as with updating the zoning laws as Councilmember Schultz mentioned. I believe our part as being a good council member ensures that maintaining strong relationships with key members of the community, enabling to provide them with the necessary tools for businesses to reside and residents to do well a lot, is the most important piece.
All right. Thank you, Chris. And Dan, please help us. What do you believe the city government's role in fostering a positive business development, business environment is?
I believe the government actually plays a very large role in creating a positive business environment by ensuring proper zoning, supporting mixed-use developments, prioritizing neighborhood revitalization. Things zoning policies are crucial because they ensure that commercial and residential areas can coexist, help drive foot traffic and help local businesses thrive. I also believe by promoting mixed-use developments, we create vibrant spaces that attract both residents and businesses, allowing for growth and sustainable economic development. Additionally, revitalizing our residential neighborhoods is essential to attract quality business. When we invest in making our neighborhoods safer and more appealing, businesses are more likely to settle here, knowing that they have a solid customer base and are well-maintained in attractive communities. I think that balanced approach will really help Burnsville retain and attract business, ensuring long-term growth and success for our economy.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes.
And thank you all for that question. The next is a little more specific as it relates to a particular development proposal that's out there. Chris, you're going to be tackling this one first. There's proposal out there for the freeway dump site in Burnsville. What are your thoughts on that proposal and what should the city's role be in this project?
Thank you for the question again. So the concept is a great idea. It's a Topgolf-like driving range and indoor pickleball court, which I think are wonderful amenities to bring to Burnsville. It would be, it would love to have them here. But I also think that it'd be a great place to have them at the Burnsville Center where we could use some amenities such as that to help build up the businesses there. Unfortunately, the location they chose is a declared superfund site by the MPCA. The chalet driving range is on the east side of 35W and it's actually a long closed, unlined dump from the 1960s in the state through the MPCA. It's charged with cleaning up that site. It has been found to have some types of contaminants in it, coal ash and PFAS. The dump site sits right next to the Minnesota River and it's by 12 or 17 drinking water wells as well. So in order for the state to be able to remediate that through the MPCA, they would need to have all buildings removed. It's actually listed in their plans. Therefore, it really makes sense that MPCA quickly denied that plan when it came before them. And I think as city leaders, we have the responsibility to protect all residents and others by safeguarding not only our drinking water, but all our water from pollution. And as a council member, I think we have two major concerns: economic stability and public safety. In my mind, public safety outweighs economic concerns every single time.
Thanks, Chris. Now, Dan, same question to you. The proposal on the freeway dump site, what do you believe? What are your thoughts on it and what is the city's role in this process?
Well, I think the proposal for the dump site is pretty exciting. It's a good opportunity for Burnsville. It presents a chance to bring in significant amenity to our city, one that could attract tourism. And as a member of the CBB, that's something I'm pretty excited about. It'll help boost the local business and expand our tax base. However, I agree that the site's history as a closed garbage dump is a concern. And I believe it's our responsibility as a city to ensure that any development that happens there that put our aquifer at risk, we need to really work very closely with the MPCA to ensure that this project is safe for our community. But I will say, once the MPCA gives this project the green light, I would be in full support of it. But until that time, we need to go through the process and for our community.
All right. Thank you. And now Kara, your thoughts on the proposal on the freeway dump site and what the city's role might be in that project?
Sure. First, let me say first of all that this is a privately-owned piece of property and I do not support eminent domain, or worse, a taking of the property by the state without any compensation, which may be one of the things proposed by the state legislature. And the owners of the property have put forth a remediation and development proposal, which has been spoken about, but the state has already refused that. And frankly, I think they're going to refuse any proposal by those property owners. So really what we're looking at, the state of Minnesota has given us two options. Option one, pull the garbage up, just throw down a liner, slam that garbage back down, call it good. So the cost to do that is high and the land, which is on the Minnesota River, then can't ever be truly developed so that the costs for the taxpayers and the form of property tax will never be recouped. And the state seems to favor this option. Now, option two is to pull the garbage up, transport it to a lined landfill, remediate the land underneath it. It is slightly higher in cost, but we get rid of a landfill. The land can be fully developed into anything from like a neighborhood, a marina with shops and restaurants, anything. And with this plan, the costs to taxpayers would be recouped in an estimated 10 to 15 years and millions of dollars would flow in, which would help revitalize our school district in 191, who badly needs it, and also lower taxes across the city for residents and businesses. And I am a strong advocate for option number two.
Good. Thank you. Thank you all for tackling that question. The next one, I already know that time is going to be difficult for everyone, but the third question is on public safety. Dan, this is going to be going to you first. Public safety is continually changing. What do you see the city's council's role is in ensuring a safe community?
Well, I agree with you. Public safety is always evolving in Burnsville, especially in the last few years. And we've been at the forefront of many changes. We are actually the first community in Minnesota to authorize body cameras at the request of our police department. And ensuring transparency and accountability for our residents and for our police officers. We also added recently a Behavioral Health Unit, which helps both our residents and public safety personnel. This unit was created also at the request of Police and Fire, was initially partially funded through the opioid settlement money. More recently, we've just authorized the purchase and use of drones and invested in a Bearcat armored vehicle, all of which I voted for funds to the city tax levy. These tools allow our public safety teams to protect and serve Burnsville more effectively. And I just have to say, I'm the only one right here on this particular panel that has actually voted to get the drones and has always, always voted for the levy every year to support our police. When I first got on the council, back on the council in 2017, our budget for our police department was about $22 million a year. Our budget for the police department today is about $33 million. And that requires that we have to vote on the levy to make those things happen. We've had to hire police officers, we've gotten training for them. There's a lot of things we've done and I will say, everybody on our council supports public safety. That's a fact.
Thank you, Dan. Kara, next. What is the city's council, the city council's role in ensuring a safe community?
Sure. Yeah, public safety really is evolving and Burnsville is leading the way. As has been spoken about, our Behavioral Health Unit, which we all on council strongly supported, addressed the literal hockey stick rise in 911 calls related to mental health and addiction. And it's been so successful that other cities are now trying to follow our lead. We've also launched a fire and EMS pilot program to proactively reduce drug overdoses. And as a member of the Dakota County Opioid Advisory Committee, we're working to stop addiction before it even starts because that's a root cause of a lot of violent crime. It factors in 40% to 60% of domestic abuse situations. It's responsible for over 300,000 violent assaults a year across the country and 32% of all murders. So it's a very serious issue. We've completed a comprehensive staffing needs plan and we've identified that we need more first responders in the near future. However, it's easy to say you need more first responders, but the real challenge is attracting quality applicants and retaining our staff, especially after the year we've endured. So over the past six years, we have invested heavily in the mental health programs for our first responders. And Burnsville is tops in the state, reflected in our low turnover and our strong new hires. And our residents are also key to public safety. The new government neighborhood, sorry, our new neighborhood grant program, which I championed, brings people together. It's going to build connections that make neighborhoods stronger and safer. And that's why this new grant program, which is rolling out this January, is supported by our chiefs.
Thanks Kara. Onto Chris. Chris, what do you believe the city council's role is in ensuring public safety?
Well, there's a graph on Fire Station 1. It shows the large population growth and the amount of service calls that have been increased. And then it also shows a line, like a flat line showing the number of firefighters on staff in the same timeframe. I think the tale being told here is our staffing levels are not keeping up with our population growth, which is a recipe for a unsafe community, really. And a few years ago, elders, financial advisors conducted a study and realized that we were 56 full-time employees short. And the largest portion of the understaffed was our, in our public safety department, our police and firefighters/paramedics. And I find it ironic when people claim to be fiscally responsible and, but they don't fund, under any circumstances, what they need to, to ensure that we don't underfund a city. I think being financially responsible means that you ensure that we're able to do what it takes to keep our staffing levels at the right levels. And we just keep falling back and further and further behind. I don't want to ever go back there again. I think we just need to ensure that we keep funding our staffing, especially in the public safety realm, and not let our political ideology get in the way. We need our emergency service teams to have the proper equipment and keep them safe, so they can keep us safe.
Thank you, Chris. Now we're moving on to the final question before closing remarks. And this one is going to be going to Kara first. Kara, as you know, the city is currently planning on the largest project for a facility in the city's history. If elected, what is your plan to balance the increasing needs of the city with the increasing strain on our taxpayers?
Right. Thank you. So my answer is going to be boring, but I think our business community appreciates the importance of boring, behind-the-scenes work. So yes, we need new facilities. Yes, they're costly. Mistakes, however, are even more costly and we're unfortunately redoing our police center because a thorough study was not done on future rather than current needs. So most of that was done before Councilmember Gustafson and I were sworn in. And let me assure you, that's not how we make decisions now. The process is longer and more thorough in assessing future needs and trends. It is painfully meticulous. And we have our city manager Greg Lindberg and all of our staff to thank for that. They've been doing excellent work. So how do we balance cost, strain, and needs? This has to be holistic and not just limited to cutting costs on a specific project. We need to look upstream every place we can. This is a process and internal culture change at City Hall, which is just starting. And in business, the most successful companies are proactive. They find solutions at the earliest possible stage and that reduces long-term expenses. And if we do this, we can address the challenges upstream before they become more costly and complex, resulting in a more efficient use of money. So this means focusing on preventative measures or proactive measures, whether that's infrastructure maintenance or community services, which will then save us time and money. And by focusing on early inflection points, we provide better services on a leaner budget, just like your businesses have to do, ensuring that we are going to meet the needs of our community without overburdening taxpayers.
Thank you. And Chris, now on to you. Same question. Currently, the proposed project is the largest city's facility project in our history. If elected, what's your plan to balance the increasing needs of the city with the increased strain on our taxpayers?
Well, I believe what Councilmember Schultz said was completely correct. I believe this project is a needed investment in our city infrastructure and it's how we are planning to actually pay for it is a great example of financial planning. It is important to keep our facilities up to date. Our city has grown tremendously over the past 30 years and our facilities just need to keep up, grow with it. And this is us basically saving up for the future capital investment projects for the next five to 10 years. And using this method, when the projects are completed and the bills come due, we're able to pay them without taking a financial strain on taxpayers in those given years. So it is tremendous. Credit goes to Jenny Rhodes and the staff on that, our CFO. What I disagree with is how we're funding the project. We're increasing our franchise fees on utility bills to about $8 a month. And we're calling it a fee, but not really a tax. And to me, it seems a little bit underhanded. It feels like if we really feel like this is the best course of action for our city, we should really call it what it is. We should use the political brevity to say, hey, this needs to be done. This is how we have to pay for it. There's no other way. Call it what it is, a tax increase. And as city leaders, I think we're vested in making decisions that we feel are in the best interest of the city. And with that responsibility, we owe the constituents to be completely transparent in how we're doing it.
All right. Thank you. And now, Dan, over to you. Largest facilities project in the history of the city of Burnsville. If elected, how do you plan on balancing the needs of the city with the increased strain on our taxpayers?
That is certainly a challenge. I'm no stranger to building things in our city over the years, as you know. But this project is not funded through property taxes and it is through a utility fee. And I agree with you, Chris, tax fees are both three-letter words. But we've been using that fee for quite a while to maintain our city-owned buildings now and that's been a way to take it off of the property owners and put it on actually everybody that lives in this city who has utilities. That means it spreads the cost across all users, including our nonprofits, which can distribute the burden in a more equitable manner. Additionally, as Chris was alluding to, it's a 30-year bond program that we'll be looking at, which means that this facility will be spread out over time, meaning both current and future residents will be paying to make this happen. This, I'm trying to, I believe that this project is really designed to handle our city's needs for the next 30-plus years. And I believe it's a very smart and forward-looking investment for our community.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Thank you all. Thank you Kara. Thank you, Dan and Chris for joining us today. Now, we'll give each of you a minute for closing remarks and let us know why you would be the best candidate to represent us on the Burnsville City Council. Chris, I will have you go first.
Well, thank you to the Chamber. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Brady, and of course Kara and Dan. I appreciate being able to discuss things with you. I believe that I have a, I really care about the city. I care about the people and I really enjoy going out door-knocking, learning more about how the city can help people and seeing how they live. I have a campaign slogan. It's called Believe in a Better Burnsville. It's more than just a clever play on the letter B. It is really what I believe. If you think about Burnsville the way it is now and if you really love it, we can always find ways to improve and make it better. And I believe that kind of brings out that, those ideas. I spent many years on the Advisory Commissions and learned a ton about the city operations, got to know the staff really well. I love working for Burnsville and I would love to continue to do that. As a Navy veteran, I know what it means to serve. And as an accountant, keeping our spending within budget is my day job. So I hope you can, I hope I earn your vote in November. I love the music too. That really is fun.
Thank you. I love that myself. Next, moving on to Dan. Dan, let us know why you would be the best candidate to represent our area.
Well, I believe I may be the best candidate to represent Burnsville because I have a proven track record of leadership and a vision for the future. I've been actively involved in shaping policies that foster economic development, strengthen public safety, and support our neighborhoods. I've also demonstrated that I can make tough decisions when necessary, always with the goal of improving the quality of life for everyone in Burnsville. My experience working with different stakeholders, our residents, and businesses, and local organizations, it gives me insight needed to navigate the challenges ahead. I've already voted for key measures that have improved our city from public safety to redevelopment projects and I know how to get things done. I'm passionate about Burnsville and ready to continue working for all of you. So together, we can build a future that we're all proud of. At this time, I would humbly ask for your vote and thank you for your continued support.
Thanks, Dan. And now Kara, take this and let us know who would be the best candidate.
So ultimately, it's your decision on who is the best candidate to serve our community. And I do use that word intentionally, "serve." And I would note that all three of the candidates that you have before you have served in the armed forces, so Navy, Army, Air Force, go. This is a job interview, though, and you are the bosses. Together, we've shifted decision-making back to you. You rewrote the city code. We've removed barriers to housing, and we're creating a safer community with initiatives like our Behavioral Health Unit. We're building stronger neighborhoods with our grant program. We're revitalizing business districts based on your vision, not ours, and improving transportation so people can work and play in our city even if they don't live here. I'm not known for offering the same old ideas as other elected officials. But like you, I believe we need to innovate to thrive. And I built strong relationships with staff and the community to deliver effective and exciting services, always with a focus on KPIs and cost. That's the same thing you have to do. So when choosing your next city council member, I hope you'll hire me.
Thank you, Kara. Thank you, Kara. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Chris. And thank you all from the Burnsville community for joining us in this candidate forum. Just a reminder, starting September 20th and running through November 5th, you can begin early voting September 20th or on Election Day, November 5th. There are two positions open on the city council, so you may select up to two when you get your ballot. And joining us today were candidates Kara Schultz, Dan Gustafson, and Chris John. Thank you all very much, and thank you, candidates, for joining us today. Over to Jennifer.
Thank you, Brady. Thank you for your volunteer time with cheering our public policy committee and moderating these forums. This is one of seven Meet the Candidate events that we've recorded this year, and they are all on our Burnsville Chamber YouTube page, so please check those out. And if you want to learn more about the Chamber of Commerce, please follow us on Facebook or check out our website. And have a great day. Thank you.